Mike is coming as far as we know, right?
I'm at that stage where glasses are absolutely necessary. I'm at that stage now where glasses have become absolutely necessary.
Would you hit forty?
Fifty.
I guess he's probably not going to.
The day I turned forty.
The day I turned forty.
Yeah.
And everybody warned me.
It started like at restaurants where I was doing this the whole time. Oh, thank you very much.
Thank you. I was just going to run and get that.
Thank you.
It was like a lot of people said.
Come on through if I need you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Nice. A bunch of people said to me, oh, when I turn forty, it all changes, you know what I'm saying? Right? The day of.
Good evening, everyone. I call to order the regular meeting of the River Falls Board of Education. This is Monday, August 5th. This meeting has been properly notified and we are going to begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any visitors or delegations who would like to address the board this evening? It does not look like it, but thank you to the administrators who have joined us this evening. All right, we are going to move into informational items and it is our good fortune to have two representatives of the Wisconsin Legislature with us today. I think that it would be wise for us to begin with introductions. So, Mr. Zimmerman, would you start? That we will go around and just make sure that we all know who we are at the table.
Well, my name is Shannon Zimmerman. I've obviously had the privilege in the past to come visit with you folks. I've known many of you for, it could be argued, decades now, living in this community. Both my sons, great products, Wildcats, and then we actually went on to be Falcons. So, just love the community and appreciate the opportunity to talk about your priorities tonight and what you're looking at over the next budgetary period.
Representative Warren Petrick for the 93rd District, which with the population changes and the redistricting, I will now represent the city of River Falls up to divisions. So, right up here, everything south will be in the 93rd and everything north will be in Shannon's, which is sacred company, I believe, right? So, the city is basically divided, as you know.
So, we just made it, then?
So, very happy to be so welcomed to the community. This is after the first official time that I've met all of you and just delighted for your service. Thank you very, very much for all that you do for our children in this community. And I'm anxious also to learn what your priorities are, how we can be of assistance to you. Shannon and I have worked together now very closely for several years and we are very, very fortunate. And he's a very humble person, but he is on the Joint Finance Committee, which is the most powerful committee there. I happen to chair the Workforce Development Committee, which to me, this is the seed. This is where it all starts. And of course, a great education is the key to a great career. And so, I am anxious to learn from you how I can take your knowledge and take it forward to Madison and work for you. So, thank you very much for having me. Much appreciated.
Mike, we are just going around and introducing ourselves so that everybody knows.
Sorry, I'm late. I was coaching football at the high school. I was a former work-based learning coordinator at our high school. So, I worked with our youth apprenticeships, so we know D W P well. I'm Mike Miller. I'm a local president, been here most of my life. I've was on the school board for 10 years and then just got reelected back in April of this year. So, glad to be back on it, very thankful for you guys to come and visit with us tonight and learn more and have some discussion around school finance.
Fantastic.
I'm Lindsay Curtis. My family and I have had the privilege of living in River Falls for about eight years now. And I've been on the board for just a year, so even though Mike was just elected, technically, I'm still the newbie. But I have four kids that are in the district, one little one who's still at home, three that are at Westside right now. And just to echo Mike, we're grateful that you have set aside the time to come and visit with us this evening and really appreciate just the collaborative nature of being able to sit down and visit with you and share with you.
My name is Bob Casey. I've been on the board for about two, two-plus years. My wife and I moved back to River Falls 30 years ago, yeah, 29 years ago. And I work for a software company in town called TCP Software, formerly known as LadTech Software. Very happy you guys stopped in tonight, appreciate your time. It's not very easy to, you know, lots of nights and weekend meetings and such. And we appreciate your time spending with us today and look forward to talking to you about our budget and so forth. So, thanks.
Todd Schultz, I'm the Board Treasurer. I was appointed, it's probably been about three years now, appointed to fill a seat that when Mike took a job in the district and he left and was reelected then for a term shortly after that. So, Treasurer for the district, lifelong resident, River Falls grad, UW River Falls grad as well. So, I've been in town my whole life and I've got two kids in the district myself.
Jamie Benson, Superintendent, not a lifer to the community, but have been very blessed to be the Superintendent here. Now, I'm starting my 10th year and I too will extend our appreciation. Thanks for joining us here tonight. Appreciate your time.
Stacy Myers, and although I am not a native River Falls person, my children are. And we, it's been a great place for us to live. I have a few months on Allen in terms of being the longest-serving board member, so just a few.
Thanks for being here. My name's Allen Tuckton-Hagan. There we go.
Yep.
My name's Allen Tuckton-Hagan. I've been on the board for about 15 years now. River Falls resident for, in the district for about 37 years, currently live in Clifton Township. Not only am I a board member and board clerk, but I'm also now on the Board of Directors for the Wisconsin School Board Association. So, I'll, so you'll probably hear more from me and maybe see more from me from just that standpoint. Very interesting what's going on statewide and all of that. So, that's why we're so appreciative for you being here. I've had three boys go through the district here, love this district, love this staff. We're, as a board, very passionate about what we do, so we appreciate your interest in what we're doing, so thank you.
I'm Amanda Taylor. I am Mr. Benson's Admin Assistant.
I'm David Bell. I'm the Director of Human Resources and Leadership Development for the district. I've been with the district for five years, live in the community. I have three kids that attend both Meyer Middle and River Falls High School.
Chad Smorava, Director of Finance and Facilities, working on year 19 and finally moving to River Falls. A month or two ago.
We've been working on him for a while.
Playing the right lot.
I know, I know.
And you're in Clifton Township as well?
I'm your neighbor.
Yeah, right.
So, again, to reiterate what people are saying, welcome and thank you for coming. We very much appreciate your willingness to take time to come with us this evening. As board members, we have a responsibility to advocate for our school district. That's one of the things that we do as public servants. Once again, the coming biennium budget cycle will face you with many challenges. We absolutely get that. We also know that we have a particular concern about sharing with you our local story so that you have a sense of how the decisions that you make related to the budget impact the people of River Falls, specifically children and families. So, tonight, we are going to focus our conversation with you on school finances and our, the concerns that we have related to the $1.4 million, million-dollar shortfall that we are concerned about anticipating in the 2023 and beyond. We'll also talk a bit about special education funding. We do want to recognize that we've made some progress on that, but we'd like to talk about what the implications will be. I'm afraid that we have not prepared a lot about workforce development. And so, what that means is we are going to need to invite you to come back again because we do have much to share about that, but we're trying to be respectful of the time. There are lots of figures that we can tell you about our school district, but I think that one of them that is important for you to realize is we take financial stability and financial responsibilities really seriously. I think that that is one of the things that makes us a strong school district. One of the ways that we're able to do that is by guiding our decisions through a strategic planning process. And so, the board has just newly adapted and adopted a new five-year plan. That really sets the stage to be able to talk about the financial issues that we would like to discuss. And so, at this point, Jamie, could you talk a bit about our strategic plan and then we are going to move on?
Yep, and I'm going to be, I'll be brief. I think you have a handout in front of you. One thing that we're proud of is that we basically can put our strategic plan on one page. But the, I think the notables are that we just wanted to share with you is that we do take our work very seriously and to develop a strategic vision towards the future is not something to be done by a handful of people sitting in this room, but we reached out to the community and this is a reflection of their values and what they want of this school district in the coming years. It's a five-year plan. By reaching out to the community, we held three public listening sessions and we also conducted a community survey. And essentially, we boiled down some common themes. We had had some excellent participation from the community and we took their vision and developed a strategic plan around it. And so, we're excited to begin this new five-year plan. Obviously, there's some really good things going on in this district, so we're not throwing the baby out with the bathwater because we have a new strategic plan. There's many things that we want to hold on to and continue to build on and get better at. But we really just kind of wanted to point out that our community values are reflected in this plan, that we are a forward-thinking school board and district and that we take our obligations very seriously. We understand the responsibility that goes with sitting in these chairs and we try every day to do right by our community and do right by our kids with our actions and our plans moving forward. I don't know if you have any questions on the strategic plan. Otherwise, again, we didn't intend to dive into the nuts and bolts on that. We just wanted to kind of share with you that it's new and we're excited about it and it helps to, for you to know that we involved our community in the process of developing that plan.
Yeah. I, just one maybe question and probably obvious, but just like business plans go, you know, we establish the plan and there's always some level of, you know, flexibility for change. And so, you know, what's your process for kind of evaluation at milestones to, you know, come back to Periscope Dep and look around? How are we doing? Has the world around us changed?
Yeah.
I'm curious, just maybe your thoughts on that.
Yeah, that sounds like a reflection of some of the questions that the school board also had of administration because in, you know, with a plan like this, it's up to the administration to carry out the plan and develop implementation steps, action steps and specifics for how to carry out the plan. And the board's been very deliberate to say, we trust you, but at the same time, we need to hold ourselves accountable. We need to be able to report to the public the progress. And so, we've committed to a more formal update in a 90-day cycle is the approach that we've taken. And so, although we will find ourselves talking at each and every board meeting about some pieces of our strategic plan, we're going to have a formal update for the school board and the public every 90 days, so ballpark, I think that puts us at a November, February and May kind of timeline. And you're right, there will be some things that change and evolve, but we have a, our administrative team has been working all summer to develop an actual matrix, kind of a report form. And again, to be honest, some of that helps hold us accountable to see to it that we're following through on what this vision that we were given by our community means and how we're going to set about taking on that, that course of action.
So, a set of almost KPIs related to?
Oh, yeah. Yep.
Perfect.
Yep.
So, no, you go right ahead.
Just to sort of piggyback off that, but have you established the metrics that will be part of that plan then? So, every 90 days, there will be, I would imagine, certain data attached?
Yeah, so we literally on this matrix, now you're testing my memory, but we, we've tinkered with this actual document and, you know, there, the reporting will include what, what's the specific action? What's the doable thing that we're going to do to address? On the bottom, some of these objectives that are listed. And so, that'll be the first column is, okay, what are we specifically working on in relation to this plan? And then, we have the who's responsible and we have the column that says, and who else needs to be involved as we move this forward? And then, a column that talks about the timeline and how will we measure? How is it that we will know that we've accomplished what we've set out to do? And also, you know, this is not a, if you have a plan that says we will install new parking lights out in the parking lot, when that's done, you can check a box and say it's done. As you can imagine, there are pieces of this plan that will continue on and so, it's not necessarily going to always have an end date, but we will have timelines associated with our progress.
Perfect.
We also have a tradition on the school board that we have what we call a spotlight on education at the beginning of most of our meetings. And we're talking about using that little spotlight to be able to highlight some specific concrete example of how this strategic plan is playing out in our schools with our kids. And so, that will be another data point for us to be able to keep track of what's going on.
Outstanding.
So, one of the things that we know when we are implementing the strategic plan is that there are a variety of attacks that we have to accomplish in order to be able to check these things off. We know that money is not everything about this. However, the financial situation of our school district is absolutely critical to being able to have the resources that we need to achieve these goals. And so, that's what we would like to talk about today and Todd is going to get us started. Todd serves as the Treasurer as well as the Chairperson of the Finance and Facilities Committee. So, Todd.
So, I'd like to start off by just saying, I know Chad and Jamie have a little bit more detailed information and they can kind of share that. But on the high level, really, the thing that we're faced with after the last budget came out is we, we had some federal money that was spaced over a two-to-three-year window that allowed us to do what we needed to for things like health insurance, wage increases. You both probably know this, but we basically have a burden or want to meet the CPI, which this year was, the number was, I've got 5% in my head, but.
4.7.
4.7, so in terms of staff wage increases, things like that, that we use some of our one-time money to fill and those are not things that will go away for us in the future in terms of expenses. In fact, at the rate we're going, you know, some of those might have to increase unfortunately beyond, beyond what they were this year. So, that has left us in a situation where we're looking at, the number we've got is 1.4. You'll hear a fiscal cliff, what we're calling a cliff. Basically, if we've got one-time money that we're having to use for some of these ongoing operational expenses, it's going to leave us potentially short, what we're calling the cliff of about 1.4 million when that next budget cycle comes up. So, you know, we've had some high-level discussions and we're lucky that most of our board members and staff will attend the committee meetings when they can too. So, a lot of, a lot of our board has been a part of this discussion. But, you know, we've kicked around the idea of what does it look like if we have to get to something like an operational referendum or an operating referendum, which a lot of districts in this area have had to use, but we've been fortunate not to have to do that. But that, that's something that we've kicked around as a possibility and, and we would really, really love to avoid having to do something like that. So, at the high level, that's, that's basically what we're looking at. The alternative to something like that is potentially cutting courses, pulling back on staff, other things, letting maintenance become deferred, which ends up costing us more in the long run too. You know, we've tried to get, we've got a good plan and really tried to get ahead of that with our, with our Buildings and Grounds Department. And so, there's just a lot of those kind of things that, that we've got on our mind moving forward here with the next budget and looking at what we're calling the cliff and how we're made, basically made whole and interested to talk a little bit more about that.
Yeah, one quick question if I can, Todd.
Yep.
What has the student count been this, are we going north, south, steady? I just to get a sense of what's happening there.
I'll kind of summarize the, and you can, anyone can jump in when I'm wrong here, but we were on a pretty steady path of 70 kids per year adding, leading up to the 2019, 2020 school year. And then, in 2021 and 21, 20, 20, 21, we stepped back. 21, 22, we got back about 50 that we had lost. And then, this year, we'll find out in about a month what that number looks like. But at best, we're saying maybe equal to 19, 20 is, is what we think from, projecting for enrollment is.
Yes, we're hoping to get back to that.
Okay, which was just over 3,500 students.
Okay, so up from the previous period then, you'd be, okay?
We should be up, yeah, 2021 school year low point, 21, 22, up a little. Hopefully, this year, up even further from where we had been.
Yeah, we had, as you know, school funding is based on a rolling three-year average. And so, when we were on a path of increasing by 70, 70, 70, and then we went down of 50 kids, as did many other districts in the first year of COVID.
Yeah.
We took a dinger there. This last year, we recouped about 35 of those kids. So, we're still not back to, we're nowhere near seeing that steady 70-student increase. To that, I'll also mention that the school board will be interviewing three demographers and we'll be selecting one firm to do a formal enrollment study for us to help us with some of those anticipated enrollment trends and facility needs, staffing needs, budget needs and so on. That's called for in our strategic plan as well. We're hiring that firm this month, actually.
Great. I know some of the housing additions may also impact that potentially favorably if it's affordable housing and more families can move to River Falls. Your student population inherently would go up.
Yeah, right now, again, we, the board met with the city council last week. We have a good relationship. I meet with Scott Simpson, the city administrator, once a month. We try to dial in and those are the most frequently asked questions that I have for him. What can you tell me about development? What's going on? And we need an outsider that has expertise in this area to give us a real firm projection looking into the future and we'll, we'll be hiring that company this, this month. Apartments are not yielding students.
That's right.
If you have a three-bedroom apartment, you might yield, from our conversations with four different school districts that have been in a similar position, you might yield a half a student per three-bedroom, but one- and two-bedroom apartments. And I mentioned that because of, there's been hundreds of apartment units going up in this community. We were speculating at this point that until that demographer study is done, that we may not yield a lot of students from those apartment units necessarily.
What was the total Hudson you had said last, the meeting last week? All those apartments south of Fleet Farm there, they?
Yeah, a couple hundred units and I think they yielded 15 or fewer students.
A lot of that was geared towards people who are kind of like downsizing and more retired, I think, too. I just was going to mention that we, we were made aware and a lot of us have seen the meeting that Hudson had in June regarding a similar study that they had done. And I think based on the slides I saw, it looked like they were not projecting what I would call many gains, but even, even a little decline in some of the, it was broken out, I think, by elementary, middle school and high school ages, but.
Yeah, I mean, I attended a board meeting there, was taught, they talked about that study. Due to the cost of housing, you're just not picking up many of those family-aged, you know, folks that can afford a $500,000 median home price. So, it's, it's a difficult dynamic that Hudson's dealing with and I hope that River Falls doesn't follow suit, but, you know, we'll see.
So, we really hope to avoid this budget cliff because we don't like the idea of larger class sizes or laying off teachers or an operating referendum. And so, to help tell our story, Jamie and Chad have a PowerPoint presentation about the cliff and what it would take to keep us whole, which we assume is what you would be interested in doing.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're, we'll, we'll go quick. We aren't going to turn this into a half an hour dog and pony show for you, but we wanted to put a couple of things down on, down in writing. And so, next slide, please. Basically, you can go to the next slide. So, when we have the 21, 23 biennial state budget really did not provide any general state aid that goes directly to school classrooms, to school children, to directly into school funding. It basically is, and we understand and we, in part, we understand that your decision as legislators was that with the large amount of federal stimulus money, taking a pass, if you will, on the 21, 23 budget cycle and not providing general school aids, that, that's where we're identifying a forthcoming cliff that you're going to hear us advocate, that you help address that in the coming budget cycle. And so, I don't know, Chad, did you want to dive any deeper into this particular slide?
So, I mean, we all know educational funding is, you know, a pretty complicated topic. There's a lot of different parts and pieces. Perhaps one of the most difficult it is for me to explain to board members and, you know, people administrators and people who ask is they're kind of trying to make heads or tails of the comments that are news they hear coming out of Madison that there's been record increases in school funding. And then, they've got poor Chad in the corner kind of telling a different story, similar to what they've started sharing there. So, I think one of the, in recently, but in one of the most recent biennial budget, I've kind of had to do some research to kind of really figure out that what's being labeled as school funding, you know, coming out of Madison and legislature, is actually not providing us with an increase in dollars that we can spend in operational, operational expenses. I think we've built our budget around living on about a 2% increase, which had been the trend coming out of Madison for probably the better part of a dozen years. And so, in this most recent year, or biennium, the one we're in now, I think we're all aware, I've educated the school board, is that we received zero in the 21, 22 school year in terms of new funding on a per pupil basis and also zero in the current school year, 22, 23, on a per student basis. So, it makes it difficult for the board to plan because they've got, you know, the finance guy saying, well, it's hard. Can we give these raises? Can we afford to do that? And we have had zero increase. Now, I think we're going to talk a little later about how on a one-time basis, the federal funds have, federal funds have come in to backfill for that. But where I really get nervous is projecting the 23, 24 and beyond budget, which we will start in about a month. And at this point, we are, you've got, again, the finance director telling the story that we're probably going to be short $1.4 million right out of the chute. And that's an uncomfortable message that, you know, they don't like to hear. So, I think one of the things that I've had to explain though is how the levy tax credit, it goes directly to property taxpayers and it's not really going to schools. And so, that's been a difficult concept. So, I think what we're really looking for is how to project for the upcoming school year in light of, you know, receiving $0 increase in the current school year and the last one because that's, that's going to take quite a commitment, you know, from the legislature, several hundred million dollars, so.
Yeah, you can go ahead. Next slide. It's a kind of a repeat. I've got three slides, kind of tells the same story, just trying to tell it in different ways to make sure everybody understands that if we, we were basically told to backfill our budgets with that one-time, non-recurring COVID money, which we're in the process of doing, and that by that non-recurring use of revenue, it creates this initial two-year cliff. I said $400 summarized on the bottom in that reddish hue that's, in a typical year, we've, we've been accustomed to $200 per pupil for each of the two years, times 3,500 students that we have here, that's how you get to 1.4. Next slide. Just like other districts in the state of Wisconsin, we're facing the effects of this $1.4 million cliff. It's that, it's that one-time federal money that certainly served us well during this time period, but our concern is not having the base to build upon and that that next slide alludes to, please, Amanda. So, by using those one-time, non-recurring funds and spending down that federal money, depleting the federal revenue, the, the base funding finds itself at a void. And so, we have that non-recurring base fund impact again in 23, 24. Next slide. So, we know that this isn't the first time that you've heard. So why, we know that this isn't the first time that you've heard this one, and you are also, I'm confident, have had conversations along this line. But to be clear, the Legislative Fiscal Bureau, LFB, had reported fund balance to be three-point-eight billion with a B, and that's two-point-eight billion more than the net balance that was projected at the time that you enacted the twenty-one, twenty-three budget. In addition to that, and some of this maybe is in the form of a question for clarification, maybe, maybe I've got some numbers wrong, I don't think I do, that in addition to that, three-point-eight billion, there's another one-point-seven billion on top of that in that budget stabilization fund.
Anyday fund?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And so question of the day is, will the cliff be addressed by the legislature? And so we're looking forward to talking with you about that. You can understand that in our business, where we don't make widgets and we're not producing products other than producing a product of a well-rounded high school graduate, our, our company, if you will, our district operates with eighty-five percent of what we do involves people. And I'm also confident that you've heard much about the staff shortage. A couple of weeks ago, Madison talked about two hundred teaching positions that they're short. We're not in that same kind of position. My point in bringing any of that up is to say that we know that we have to remain competitive if we're going to attract the best and the brightest to be in front of our kids every day. We've got to remain competitive. And so we carefully track, we collect statistics, we look at data compared to what other districts are paying in salary and benefits for all employee groups, and we try to, we try to remain competitive. And in order to do that, the cliff is very concerning. Next slide. So with the Legislative Fiscal Bureau's two-year budget, that general fund was now projected at three-point-eight again, and notably, it did not include the one-point-seven. Next slide. We're faced with that question, what next with those staffing decisions, budget decisions in the spring of twenty-three? That's this school year. We will be, as we do every year, we will be determining contracts and salaries and wages for employee groups for the following year, while simultaneously, I'm suspecting you too will be sitting at the table having budget conversation, state, at the state level. And so this is a, this is a chronic issue that I don't know we'll ever get around that, that the timing of our work in settling those contracts, wages, and salaries doesn't align very well with the timing of your work. But the sooner that some of those decisions are made, my point is, the better for our ability to know from a planning standpoint, are we going to need to make cuts? Are we going to have to issue layoff notices, reduce programs, increase class sizes resulting from the reduction in staff, eliminate courses, defer maintenance, and so on, the list goes? Or option C is, of course, lobby, lobby the legislature to do some budget repairing in that twenty-three, twenty-five budget cycle. And, and then our last option would be if we needed to go to our local taxpayers and ask them for a levy override, that's always an option. Next slide. Last slide, just to, again, seek some legislative support. We do have a strategic plan. We, in the meantime, we will be working on budget options kind of behind closed doors. We're going to remain transparent. When I say behind closed doors, I, I, I think of things like, we don't want to make a, a, we don't want to issue a bunch of staff layoff notices if some of the work you folks in Madison do would help us to avoid doing that. And so we, we kind of have to do some of that work as a budget plan and be forward-thinking in kind of the worst-case scenario planning. And then we also just need to remain transparent in our communication with our public and, and with you folks as well. So in addition to a key question related to, what do you think and where are you at when it comes to whether or not, you know, what kind of, I'm, I'm using this phrase of repair. Sometimes I know you get involved in a budget repair bill of sorts, and so I don't want to confuse terminology. In my world, it feels like there needs to be a repair to our cliff. And so while we, we understand, we were told to spend the federal money, that's one-time, non-recurring money. But over here, when we're spending money, we're spending that money on recurring expenses, that's where that cliff evolves. And so in addition to our advocacy, to hear more from you tonight on what can you tell us? What have you got in mind? What are the conversations? What are the preliminary conversations? We also want to recognize that we appreciate some additional special ed funding and would ask that you continue to do that. For decades, special ed funding in Wisconsin has been on a decrease. Nineteen-seventy-three, special ed funding in this state was funded at fifty, fifty percent, I believe. And it trickled backwards and backwards and backwards, and now you folks have kindly tried to address it one piece at a time. We've got a long way to go with that. Just to illustrate for you some quick math on how special ed costs to us. We spend six-and-a-half million dollars per year on special ed funding. And in return, we get one-point-five million of state reimbursement. Now admittedly, we get, we get some federal money for special ed services as well in a couple of different forms. But basically, the difference between our six million, did I say six-and-a-half? Six million in expenses and state reimbursement of one-point-five, it's still, even with the federal money, it still leaves this void of three-and-a-half million dollars. And so what happens is that we have to transfer money from General Fund Ten over to Fund Twenty-Seven, Special Education Money, to pay for those special ed expenses. And when you do that, you're removing, we are removing those dollars from providing other services for our general ed population. We love all our kids. I don't want to come across anything other than that. We take pride in how well we serve our special needs students. We do it well. It's just that the funding formula is in conflict. And so that's the second pitch today. In addition to addressing the cliff, it's, please continue on the special ed funding as well. We need help. One more soundbite on special ed. In the last five years, we had to transfer one million dollars more in special ed funding than we did six years ago. In the last five years, we've had to pull an extra million dollars out over from Fund Ten over to Fund Twenty-Seven for special ed. Just in the last five years, we serve four-hundred-and-thirty special ed students. We're pretty, pretty, pretty close to the state average. We, we have a little over twelve percent special ed population. So those are kind of the, kind of at the heart of what we're advocating for and hoping to hear from you more about this evening.
So let's, let's start back with the, with the budget cliff issue. I do wonder, would it be helpful for you to hear how we spent the ESAR funds, the funds that came from the federal government?
Yeah.
All right. Do you?
Yeah.
I can do that, or do, you go ahead. No, you go ahead.
So we primarily had three major categories, all of which, we had three major categories that we spent our ESAR funds on. The first was primarily IT and e-school related, so getting the technology, equipment, the IT security to kids so that they could participate electronically for part of the one school year, and for those who chose to continue with e-school. So that was our first category. The second category is, we spent quite a bit on air quality improvement in the last school year, so some equipment and technology that's worked out really well for us. And then the balance, about three million dollars, has, I think, gone right on to doing what the legislature asked us to do, which is to spend it to backfill for the two-hundred-dollar per pupil increase that we did not receive in twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-two, twenty-three.
Just to clarify as a side note, I know some of the challenging conversations you guys had in Madison in relation to, you had the ability, I think, with about ten percent of that ESAR money to determine kind of the direction that some districts who were more face-to-face received more funding, those that were less face-to-face. I just want to clarify so you know where we are at. We had our pre-K through sixth grade students face-to-face five days a week. We did a kind of this hybrid approach whereby the seventh through twelfth grade, we, we took an alternative hybrid approach there where they were coming to school on alternative days. Theory there was reducing the number of face-to-face students when the COVID came out with the amount of contagious nature of that virus and all that was going with it. We, we felt like we were making the right decision at the time. And we also offered to our community, if they wanted, virtual school programming. We had three-hundred-and-sixty kids. Their parents wanted that option and chose that option. By comparison, now that we've weathered that storm, and so too have those parents and students, we don't have anywhere near that number in a, in a virtual setting anymore. But just wanted you to kind of know that pre-K through six, we're in school five days a week and always have been, and we took that hybrid approach for a number of reasons in grade seven through twelve. And so, of course, then we did lose some of that funding availability, but we're, that's where we're at, I guess. I don't know what else, anything else you wanted to add, Chad?
So, so we took a cut because not all of our students were in time full, full-time or in-person full-time, but it was still expensive to educate them because of our virtual e-school. So we've, we've told you our, some components of, of how the budget seems from our perspective. What questions do you have from us before we move on?
I'm going to add one more thing. Sorry. Then I'm going to try to be quiet. Virtual school, often when people hear that, they think of, so, three-hundred-and-sixty people, they were, these kids were sitting at home in front of a screen. What's so hard about that? That is not the approach we took. We hired teachers as well as purchasing online curriculum. We did a hybrid approach there as well and tried to individualize and had counseling services for those students at home. And we, we, we dove in with both feet, and that cost money. And that is also where a lot of that COVID relief money went, was through all of those first couple of years. Now I'll be quiet.
So questions or comments from you?
Should I go first?
Go ahead. Mike. Move his mic in a little bit.
As the newer guest, oh, sorry. Sorry about that. Well, as the newer guest, I just want to thank you for taking that head-on because in keeping the schools open, it was, it was very challenging throughout Wisconsin, of course, throughout the nation. But you stepped up and did the right thing, which is do your very, very best to serve all students. And so thank you all very much for all the efforts that it took. So you're not alone on the concerns throughout my district. Basically, everyone is facing the same sort of concerns that you are. This goes on in all of the, six of the budgets that I've faced, you know, the schools immediately have wonderful groups lobbying for them and will continue to do so. Very happy that you are on that, Alan. And so I, I've talked to WSB many, many times, and they do a great job of explaining what's going on. And as we get into the budget process, I, I'm going to leave this room without making any promise other than to you that I will advocate for as much as we possibly can to bring to the table for my schools throughout my district. I represent about a dozen different ones. I bump up against Eau Claire. I don't actually have any of Eau Claire anymore, but I, I deal with Eau Claire, Menominee, because I have part of Dunn County. So among my six counties, this really is very, very, you, you laid it out very, very clearly as far as the challenges that all the schools are, are facing. And it's, it's been an interesting seat for me to watch what's going on. I'm not on the education committee. I, I've requested it several times, but they, they want to keep my focus on workforce development. But of course, I have to ultimately then make the decision. So I, I lean on those that know a little bit more about the funding formula than I do. I, I've, I've heard it said many times, there's only about six people in the state that actually understand the, the formula itself because there are so many moving parts to it. I think the original intent, when it came out, was quite brilliant and have the, the richer communities help the, the poor ones and so spread it out as equally as possible. And then as more and more moving parts came into play, it became ultimately what many have referred to as a broken system. We've done study committees on school funding, and at the end of the day, I believe there were three, when I walked in, Mary Williams from up north had been on two of those committees, I believe, and she said, at the end of the day, they brought in experts from Wisconsin, from around the nation, and they said, you know what? Wisconsin has the best formula in the nation. At the end of hours and hours of discussion. And so it's like, the, the experts were saying to people, don't change it, you can tweak it here and there, but every time you tweak it, of course, the, the funding changes to every school. So that being said, I'm, I'm reluctant to say that we're going to throw that baby out with the bathwater and start a new formula for, for funding schools. I don't think it's going to happen. Every legislator usually around campaign time, you know, comes up with this broken, we got to fix the school funding formula. I'd be very careful what you ask for because it could backfire on us if we're not very, very cautious. So I will be very, very careful about how we approach this. The fiscal cliff that you've described is a, a reality for everybody, I believe. We, we were, it was unprecedented times, and I know we didn't want to present anybody with any kind of cliff that couldn't be addressed. And so looking at those numbers that you've shared, and I think they're quite accurate, I haven't seen anything from LFB lately, but I believe you're spot on with where our budget surplus is, which is a good place to be going in. Many states are not as fortunate as we are. We've done a good job of watching our dollars. And so to enter this new phase with a budget surplus and a stabilization fund. Now, will that money be used to backfill anything? I don't know. It's, it's typically hands-off, saving for emergency situations and whatnot. Not that this, not that this isn't an emergent time coming out of COVID. I do not know exactly, but we are in relatively good fiscal position to start our negotiations on the budget. And of course, every group, not only WSB, will be lobbying for their portion of the pie. I, I don't want to talk too long here. I could talk a long, long time about specifics, but we, we can get into that later. But I do want you to know that I will be advocating heavily for all of my rural schools. I, I have everything from little tiny Plum, Plum City to now, River Falls will be the largest that I actually represent. I never had Eau Claire, but I, I worked with their school boards. I listened to their concerns. I, I've, I've listened to Duran, and I listen to Prescott, and I hear, I hear the superintendent's doing a great job. We, we meet at CISA meetings and we hear basically the same types of themes coming up. So I will do all I can to keep us where we've been in the past at least. And that has traditionally been at about forty-plus percent of every dollar that comes in goes to education. I don't know if it's going to be in the fifty range in, in this budget, or if it'll be in the thirty range in this budget. It's way too early for me to promise anything other than I will certainly shoot for as much funding as we probably, that, that we can get, based on the fact that I have to deal with ninety-eight other colleagues from around the state that are advocating for their areas to, as, as is Shannon, and, and so Representative Zimmerman. But that all being said, I think you have to know when I leave tonight that I will do everything I can to create a, a strong financial situation for you here in River Falls and throughout my large district. It's, it covers a lot of ground, from Eau Claire to the Mississippi River. I won't have Pepin anymore, but Pepin and, and Duran work very, very closely on, on their budgets and, and goals and whatnot. So I don't know if you're collaborating with your neighbors. I would imagine you are, and I would imagine the School Board Association is listening carefully to all of you experts. So I consider you my partner, Jamie, and then the board, of course, another.
Yeah, we appreciate that. We're, we're, we know we're a little, we're early in your budget cycle, and so, truth be told, we haven't had a lot of discussions with other districts. We're focused in on what's going on here at home and doing, doing our part. But you're right, we will be comparing notes and attempting to advocate for each other along the way, too.
And that's really good. And I really believe that that collaboration and that focus from the administrators and the school boards helped us get across the goal line, the special, special ed funding that did occur. That one, big picture, you know, when you back up from it, was another federal wonderful goal and wonderful. goal and wonderful program that started in the 70s, back when I was in high school. And it was awesome in its concept. But there again, we see the failure of a federal government that kind of went, oh, yeah, we'll take care of special ed. Oh, we were just kidding. Because then they backed off, and suddenly it was thrown onto the states. And that has been the trend ever since. The feds tend to put less and less in. Now, whether with the new administration that's there, whether they're going to look at special ed as a different piece of new funding, I have no clue. I have no idea what President Biden has.
Yeah, mid-'70s. It was 70% reimbursement we used to get at the state level. I said 50, it was 70%.
And slowly, I don't know if you were, you were in administrating back then, obviously. None of us are that old, but when I was in high school, it came about. It was a wonderful concept, and I support it as much as I possibly can. I actually worked in the nonprofit world for United Servile Paulsy, and I got to attend IEPs, and it was a great blessing for me to learn more about the challenges that are there. So I will advocate strongly for special ed funding increase if I can.
Thank you. Two points. So you talked about that somebody has suggested that there are six people in the state who understand the funding formula. Fortunately, Chad is one of them.
I believe he probably is.
And so, when he tells you this story, you are getting it from somebody who understands the ins and outs. The other thing is, while we would be delighted to have a conversation about components of the school funding formula, the good news is the funding formula does not need to change in order for the legislature to make us whole to address the issue that we are at right now to prevent this budget cliff. So that's the good news. So Shannon, would you like to be able to talk with us?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ken. And so, having the wonderful privilege of starting a company and growing a company here, one of the things I always said to my staff is just get to the punchline quickly. There's a military acronym called the bluff, the bottom line up front. The problem you're describing is well-known. We knew it in the last time I was here. We talked about it. I have since talked to my colleagues both on finance and in the leadership areas within the legislature. We know that the federal funds, which I said when I last saw you, and I'll say it again, I felt and I still feel it would be negligent of us to have ignored them, recognize the problem, and we've got to make you whole. Okay? So in other words, state monies need to be disproportionately higher than they have been in the typical and traditional cycle. And for every good fiscal conservative that may be listening tonight, here's why I believe, and I'm so passionate about that. The state of Wisconsin, from a demographics perspective, is facing an aging workforce and an exiting workforce. We desperately need your product, and we want your product to be well-skilled and qualified. And I have no doubt in River Falls that will happen. And so, if we want our employers to have this benefit, we have to be making strategic investments in education. I'll take it a step further. I look at not only River Falls, which is a good example. I've seen it Hudson, St. Croix Central. Your willingness to step outside of your physical walls and engage local businesses and start to develop more technical programs, skills that are immediately employable for those who opt not to go to university, maybe after high school, should be commended. So a couple of thoughts. I'm going to try as best I can to, I'm taking it all in to walk backwards through everything. Financial certainty, everybody wants it. Every agency wants it. Every business wants it. Every family wants that certainty. And so, we all live with a little bit of uncertainty, and it doesn't mean I'm dismissing what you're saying. What you're saying is very real, but it's real for everybody, even at home. I think, Jamie, to that point, you made a very good point. In our current formula and our budgetary approach, I think we're off a year. I think we should do things a little bit differently so that you know further in advance what your budget's going to be. Good, better, and different, you know what it's going to be. This last budget was very interesting, right? Because you had people, seniors, people who are now on fixed income, people who had recently lost their jobs. There was the most heart-wrenching stories from not only schools but from everybody. And, you know, the process we followed, I'm sure one day we can say was imperfect, but there was a lot of things I think we got right in terms of where we're at. The surpluses that you reference and refer to, in my opinion, that's not, you don't want the state to have that money. It's got to come back to our communities and to all of you because those monies, it shouldn't surprise people when, again, right or wrong, history will one day judge us, putting trillions of dollars on our grandkids' credit card and bringing it, pulling it forward as we have is going to create a surge there in our coffers. And so, the monies outside of the rainy day fund, so constitutionally, the rainy day fund must exist when surpluses are there. Okay? So we can't necessarily or easily get around that, nor do we have a reason to right now. But that remaining balance, in my opinion, and as a member of the Joint Committee on Finance, should be partially used to adjust and to correct the situation and the condition you're talking about. And I also believe, since I'm on my soapbox, it should, those monies, those people who have earned it or who are on the hook now for paying for it, it should go back to them also, the remaining balance in the form of income tax or tax relief. Because we have families still fighting to recover fully from the COVID era. I'm going to pause because this is such a large topic, maybe just with this thought. Alan, you had said the last time I was here, to utilize and leverage the good folks, people like Jamie Benson, and I have not forgotten that, and I do, and I hope Jamie would acknowledge. I am not shy in picking up the phone and calling Nicolette in Hudson or Jamie here in River Falls and asking questions, the rolling three-year. We worked, I wanted to see that changed in light of COVID. We should have probably pushed the pause button there because of the unique circumstances that COVID presented. But I do utilize those resources and will continue to do so. Warren, Representative Petrick is probably right. You know, will we see a mass overhaul of the funding formula? Nope, but I think we're going to see some changes made to it, and I think it should be made. I think they should be made. There's a number of areas that I personally, you know, when you look at the checkbook of the state, it's like looking at your checkbook at home. It tells a story. It tells a story about the condition and the priorities and so forth. And I do feel firmly that there's opportunities in the funding formula where schools like River Falls, I think in some ways, and I'm not going to take, I'm not going to make this an MPS issue, but if you ever wanted evidence or proof that money doesn't cure all things, look at the Milwaukee Public School System. They couldn't have more money, and the outcomes are not anywhere near what you do here. And I think that those sort of things need to be corrected, and as a finance member would be something that I certainly will continue my quest to do. So stop, and I'll take questions.
You know, could I just ask or say something? Because I think you're right, and I came away from our last conversation when you were here, Representative Zimmerman, with this sense that somehow this isn't going to be a $1.4 million cliff. Just what is it going to be? But the other is, and I've picked this up now in my statewide board meetings, is we're also very conscious of the high number, not a record number, but a significant amount of attrition from the legislature this year. The number of new superintendents, it's not a record, but it's high. And the turnover in school boards this year is significant. So we've got a convergence of newbies here that we're going to have to rely on people like you to remind them that, you know, we didn't intend for the cliff to be what it was going to be and why as we fix it, I think. So I think that's going to be important. So I'm glad to hear you sort of reinforce that comment tonight because part of that is this newness in all the people, all the players this year is going to be important. People going, how did this happen? Where did this come from? And to have some calm, level heads be able to explain that so we can dig out of this.
It's called, you know, Alan, I find sometimes it's in the conversations I have, and I can't ever turn off the business background. I just can't. And so, there's cause and effect. And I think sometimes, even in the legislature, if you explain to people, it's easy to say, cut, you know, do whatever, but I go back to workforce, something I know that Representative Petrick is near and dear to his heart, and I'm telling you, the number-one threat to the state of Wisconsin, in this guy's opinion, is if we do not maintain and fulfill our workforce needs, these employers go elsewhere. They're resourceful, they have to, and that creates a host of other problems in the state. So when people in my caucus or on the Assembly floor can understand that when we do this, these are the effects that we expect, you know, as a result. We call it ROI. That's probably a good term. That's an applicable term that can be used in this situation. But yes, I haven't changed my position from the last time I was here. And as a member of finance, I, you know, you've got to benefit here, I think, in some ways because you've got, you know, the chair of workforce and you've got a finance member right in your backyard. And to your point about the newbies, if you will, the legislature's not different than any other company or school. When you're a freshman, you're a freshman. I mean, period. And, you know, your voice maybe is not as loud, you don't know the process, how to maybe get things done. I've worked hard to try and figure out ways to accelerate things, and this is going to be an area that, you know, we don't just want to backfill, we want to make sure the process is right so that it is sustainable in the long term.
And we really need you to do that.
Yeah.
We really do.
And just piggybacking off of your comments there, Representative, I guess, you know, I'm one of the old timers now in the legislature, so I've seen some changes, and some have been good, some have not. But certainly, education, I entered office with it as a high priority, and I look at it as an investment. It truly is an investment in our future, and as he hinted at, and it's very obvious, we have to provide the best workers we possibly can, and you're the key to that. It starts at a very early age, and we're learning even more about that, that it starts really young. Executive thinking skills are starting as young as three and four years old. And so, I'm willing to invest as much as we possibly can in early childhood education, certainly right through 16 at least. And we have a wonderful university system. We've got a great tech school system. I'd like to have a lot of time to talk to you sometime about your inroads there, and I think you and I can have some great conversations. I know you're doing many, many things right.
Yeah, we'll make sure that we share with you. We do have a handout over there that shares with you just some real quick bullet points on some of that school-to-work initiatives.
Apprenticeships. Yeah, which is one of my babies. I've built that thing up substantially over the last 10 years.
Notably, two things that you both have said, too, on our strategic plan and underneath goal number one. It's good to hear 1.4. Representative Petrick, what you just talked about, we're all in on early childhood education and the importance of getting our littles off to a great start. And the one right below that, increasing our student college and career planning and experiences, all ties in with, there isn't a stronger advocate for the fact that not every student needs to go to a four- or five-year college experience. If we're going to create jobs and keep those businesses here in Wisconsin, we need to play a role as a high school system specifically in helping to prepare those students and understand, not only do we need you, but oh, by the way, you can make pretty good money these days in the trades. You can be a member of middle-class America, be an electrician, plumber, and any other trade you can think of, and there's movement there. I think, Representative Zimmerman, you know that we've been making some progress at our high school. We've got a ways to go. We're going to continue to work on those initiatives, and so, we're going to tap on your shoulders some more with that, too.
Please do. Please do. I'm very excited about the possibilities there. I know you're doing so many things right that I can share with other schools and...
I want to say one other brief statement. I'm being quiet tonight, and it's a surprise to the rest of the board. But this, what we're talking about here is, and we know any business in the state, talent development, talent acquisition, and talent retention is critical to success in any business, right? And it's the same for a school district. Our talent acquisition and retention, we're developing, we develop great teachers in this state. We've got great teachers in this district, but if we can't keep them, there are states all around us who will pay them more and pull them away, and we're having a hard enough time getting teachers right now. We've got some great ones here. And it's just, we keep pressing Dave all the time, are we filling our slots? Are they good people? Where are we getting them and all that? We've been fortunate so far. But this fiscal cliff is one of the things that makes me the most nervous, is that if we have a significant drop in funding, that hurts our ability to compensate our teachers, and our teachers here in this district have the option of going out of state to get jobs that could pay them more. And we don't want to get into that. We haven't run into that as a serious problem yet, although there's been some instances. So it's one of the things, that talent acquisition and retention is so important to us because we've got such good teachers and staff here.
And that would be impacted even if it isn't a significant loss in revenue. Any loss in revenue is going to impact our ability to attract and retain the best teachers, which is absolutely key to be able to do what we're doing.
If I can add two things to that.
Please.
First of all, I know you mentioned conducting a salary survey, some form of initiative. I would look beyond just the teaching industry, of course, because you're competing not only with other schools. Your talent, your educational talent can be picked up by local employers and other folks who may be looking at those, so I would encourage that. I could be wrong here. I know I read this article, I sent it on to my team in finance, but I want to say it was Virginia, might not have been Virginia, so I might have the state wrong, but using the current state of Wisconsin's funding formula, there is an alternative where we can direct money specifically to educational salaries and compensation outside of the normal formula. Because a dollar into the typical formula is, well, it's treated by the formula and it's allocated appropriately. You're not alone. I mean, I, having started a new company now, wow, the fight for talent is unbelievable. The aggressive recruiting going on, you are not immune to it. And so, these are unusual times, not only for those of you in schools, but even, you know, those of us in the tech industry are dealing terribly with this problem. So all options, I guess my point of that. There's a lot of legwork that I still intend, and my colleagues still intend to do on the viability of that. Can it work within Wisconsin statutes? What's the budgetary appetite, legislative appetite, and so forth? But I guess I say that because I want to make sure you know, I get it. We all get it. I mean, you're not alone. And if we can find ways that allows us to directly maybe target educators' salaries, that we're looking at that as well.
Good.
Stacy, can I ask?
Sure.
I've been meaning to ask this, but you touched on it a little bit in discussion about the surplus. For somebody who doesn't get too into the state budget or understand necessarily the, like, when you see there's a $3.8 billion surplus, what does that, like, over what period of time do you talk about that money going back to the taxpayers or being allocated to schools? Is that over the two-year window? Is there a timeframe that gets put on that? What happens if you do some of that, and then the next budget cycle, there's a shortfall? And I just don't understand the dynamics of some of those things. And I, it's not related to school funding or any of that, but just more as a general question. You see those numbers, and you're like, how does something like that happen? And then, how do you push that out so quickly? And what happens if you have to pull back? And I just don't understand how it works.
So there's a lot of complexity to the answer, but I'll try and be really, really simple about this. A, I believe that a lot of the surplus is, again, you know, when you put trillions of dollars into an economy in various forms, it's going to work its way in some manifestation back to the state level, right? Okay? So that is a major influencer, not the only influencer certainly, but a major one. You know, don't forget, even before COVID, Wisconsin's balance sheet was pretty solid. We're mindful of that. In terms of how we use that, the legislature has a lot of latitude and flexibility. And so, I think most people, you know, we all get home, you know, we want to have that rainy day because the motor can go out and we need to replace something, or there's a sudden need on the educational side. I was transparent in saying, you know, look, if there becomes a crisis, we didn't know, you know, a year ago and two years ago, when we were having these conversations, that we had the latitude to do that. But I do believe that at the current levels, regardless of how they got there, that's too much money to be sitting in the state's bank account. I just believe that. It's got, we've got to deploy that back, again, mostly to the people who have earned it or to strategic investments and things that will generate the return. And I just, you know, I do, you're in a hotel a lot in this job, and so you get time to read. And I went back and I looked at the national debt from 1990 to today. You should be petrified, petrified of the rate of debt in this nation right now and how we're mortgaging that future. Now, the good news for you is the state of Wisconsin constitutionally has to balance its budget. The federal government does not. So I'm going to do my little part, you know, Article V Constitution of the states to force the federal government to do this. Now, taking it to the state, we passed an $80 billion budget last cycle. That's a lot of money. And I don't care whether you're Republican or Democrat, it doesn't matter. Everybody's just spending. And so, I believe that there are ways that we can be mindful, just like we would in our homes or in our businesses, to look at places the state is spending money and potentially not getting its return, places where it should invest its money to get the return. You've heard me talk about what I think a big one is. And those are the sort of changes that I really hope to see in the upcoming legislative and budget cycle.
Well, we also know that there are some other things that you have done that have impacted the district, and I want to make sure that we recognize that. So the legislature did provide some financial support to school districts for mental health resources, and for our school district, that gave us 50... And for our school district, that gave us $54,000. Thank you. We put that money to good use. That was really important. The virtual 3D floor plan mapping option, we think that that is going to be something that will be helpful for training. I think in the midst of an actual emergency, we're going to rely on our cameras because it's real time. Look at our schools. But training is important. So thank you for that as well. That was about $35,000. Jamie's already talked about the fact that we are appreciative of moving in the right direction in terms of special education reimbursement. Right now, we're sitting at just over 29 cents for every dollar that we spend. We'd like to see it more, but it's better than 25. So we're headed in the right direction. I also know, Representative Zimmerman, that you have worked on the opioid crisis, and that is absolutely something that is facing our state and impacting people that we serve. So thank you very much for that.
And to that point, I will soon be in joint finance, taking up the opioid settlement appropriations as well. And, you know, both in the form of prevention, or harm reduction, prevention, and then all those sort of things. I know that even in the schools, you're not immune, right? You see these things as well. So that's probably within the next four to six weeks, that'll be coming up.
Well, we'll look forward to that.
31 million.
31 million.
All right.
Thank you.
And Representative Petrick, we know that you are a strong advocate for gifted and talented support for our students, which is, we can never do enough of that either, as well as the workforce development. We gather in this room pretty much every Monday night. And so we are very anxious to invite you back again, when we can talk about our goals, what we've accomplished, and what we think would still be helpful as we serve our students. So thank you for all of those things. Is there anything else that we want to bring up? I'm aware of the fact that they've given us an hour.
As long as we're going to make sure we get the pat on the back in here, instead of just trying to twist your arm for more money. The other notable, I know, Shannon, you had a role to play in helping bring a new science and technology building to the university here in town. That's a big deal. And we, as a board, have recently, you know, we've had a lot of political conversations with our community. The COVID brought on several new and interesting debates. And some of that is, can strike at a person's patriotic bone. And I know, too, that Representative Petrick, you've done a lot for our veterans in our state. So we want to mention that and say thank you for that as well.
My honor. Thank you, sir.
Sam.
Can I make two requests?
Please do.
Please. So for Representative Petrick and I, help us help you. And here's how that looks. We will, you know, we have this thing called an election to work our way through. And should we be fortunate enough to come back, which is never assured, right? We'll go to work right away. And one of the things that makes a big difference that I have found, and it goes like this, when we are approaching hearings on education, on finance, I may reach out and say, would somebody also like to make the four-hour trek down? It matters when people show up in those committee hearings. It really does. And specifically for schools for a moment, you know, I am certain if I talk to Chad about, tell me about all the different ways that you became resourceful, thrifty, and creative in your financing and funding of this school, you probably have a lot to tell me. Those sort of stories need to make their way also into the Capitol. Because sometimes, maybe wrongly, there's a perception that, well, it's just more money, and it's just more money. And, and that's not, I know that that's not always the case, that it is also, there are other things happening. And so I, you know, to me, I like to hear stories about, we did this, and we did this, and we did this, and we've exhausted now all of our abilities to advance. And that also really helps bolster and strengthen cases. So please, consider when those moments arise, take a trip, you know, come on down. Happy to give you a Capitol tour while you're there. And, but testify and share your story.
And hopefully, maybe we can get Western Wisconsin site again for the hearings. We'll put some pressure on.
I tried to get River Falls twice.
That would be lovely. We did it one, at least a couple times we've done it.
They wouldn't do it back to back for me, but.
Well.
Well, we'll see what we can do.
We'll see what we can do.
We'll leverage some things.
Thank you. Thank you very much for being here tonight. Thank you for taking our story to your colleagues. Thank you for the advocacy on behalf of the children in River Falls. This isn't about us. This is about kids. It's about kids. And our ability to be able to make the kinds of decisions that support their growth and their learning so that they can be creative, productive, responsible contributors to our state. So.
Thank you for all you guys do.
All right. You're welcome to stay for our meeting. My guess is you go to a lot of meetings, and it would not be rude if you'd like to leave.
I would love to. We're doing, in the big city of Madison, early tomorrow.
You better, you better get a start on it then. Thank you.
You're not going to catch the middle school handbook.
Thank you all very much.
[laughter]
My pleasure.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thanks very much.
Thank you. Great to meet you. Yes, thanks for having me.
I'm excited about that. I really am. Thank you.
What do we need to take those?
[inaudible]
Stay calm.
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 [inaudible]
All right, everyone, we are going to. We are going to pick up our agenda. And the next thing will be a superintendent report. I believe it will be.
Yeah, I think I already gave the update. I intended to describe to the board just real quickly that our admin team's been working this summer, developing kind of this reporting process related to our strategic plan. And you've heard my spiel on that earlier, so I'm not going to repeat that again.
All right. I believe that we do not have any other administrative reports. So we are going to move on to action items. At this point, we have meeting minutes from the July 18th regular Board of Education meeting. We have bills that have been submitted for payment. We also have recommendations regarding employment. So at this point, do we have a motion to approve minutes, bills, and employment as presented?
So moved.
Okay.
Thank you, Bob. Thank you, Ellen. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The motion is carried. So for a report on the Educational Program Committee meeting, I will turn to Ellen.
Yes, we've had, at our meeting on August 1st, we had a really good conversation, again, continuing conversations about handbooks. This seems very mundane, but it's really important. One of our challenges in the district, obviously, as we've all come to be reminded this summer, is that with the number of buildings, different buildings and levels, there are different handbooks. There's some commonality between them, but there's some significant differences between them. So for us, getting our hands around the differences, what they need to say, how they should say it, and then there's some consistency around it. So we did not act on these. We'll act on them here in just a little bit as a separate board item. We gave a lot of feedback. Again, we've had a couple committee meetings where we've given a lot of feedback to our building administrators and others involved in writing these to try and give them a voice. And what we're seeing tonight is the result of that, which, this is an evolving process. So I know Bob had some good comments about, there's maybe some more work that we can do next year, and how we talk, and how we mention things, and what we're doing with these. So the handbooks tonight that we'll see are the result of lots of conversation, and it's an ongoing process. Anyway.
Thank you, Ellen. The Personnel Committee met on August 8. And at that meeting, we received a certified staffing update. We reviewed the 2022-23 Personnel Committee goals and the calendar. We recommended that the board approve the 2223 Substitute Employee Handbook revisions and the rates for employee, the substitute employees. We also recommend that the board approve the revised policy 343.2 regarding class size guidelines. And we reviewed the paraprofessional mentorship handbook. So at this point, I would like to move that we approve the substitute employee handbook revisions. Is there a second?
I'll second.
I'm going to take Lindsey. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The motion is carried. Is there a motion to approve the substitute employee rates for 2022-23?
So moved.
Thank you, Lindsey. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mike. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries. And now is there a motion to approve the revised policy 343.2 class size guidelines?
So moved.
Thank you, Bob. Thank you, Todd. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The motion is carried. So as Ellen suggested, we have spent considerable time going through student handbooks, and our administrators have spent much more time than that. They did meet the goal for this year, which was to have some revised handbooks that were in good shape for this year, and then some more work will be ongoing for the, for the next year. So at this point, do we have a motion to approve the revised 2022-23 River Falls School District Elementary Student Handbook?
So moved.
Thank you, Ellen. Thank you, Todd. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The motion is carried. Do we have a motion to approve the revised 2022-23 Meyer Middle School Student Handbook?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Ellen. Thank you, Lindsey. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I said aye as well, or I mean aye as well. Thank you. All right. Do we have a motion to approve the revised 2022-23 Meyer Middle School Athletic Handbook?
So moved.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you, Ellen. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The motion is carried. And then a motion to approve the revised 2022-23 Renaissance Charter Academy Student Handbook?
So moved.
Thank you, Ellen. A second?
Second.
Thank you, Bob. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? And the motion is carried. All right, we, we still have two more. There, is there a motion to approve the revised 2022-23 River Falls High School Student Handbook?
So moved.
Thank you, Lindsey. Thank you, Todd. Any discussion? All, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The motion is carried. And then we have the revised 2022-23 River Falls E-School Student Handbook?
So moved.
Thank you, Ellen. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Bob. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The motion is carried. All right. At this point, do we have?
A lot of pages.
Pardon me?
That's a lot of.
Oh, it's a lot of them.
If you look at all the pages that were involved in those, holy.
I, I did not need the whole printed at this time, but it's like a ream of paper. So at this point, one of the things that we needed to do as a result of the adjustments to our mission, vision, and values, is to make sure that our school board policies are in alignment. And so at this point, do we have a motion to approve the first reading of revised School Board Policy 110, the Mission Statement and Philosophy of Education?
I'll move, Joe, first.
Thank you, Todd. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ellen. Any discussion, questions, or comments? We have already approved the, the new mission, vision, and values when we approved the strategic plan, but now we need to retroactively go back and make those adjustments. Bob?
The only comment I'd have is that, should we have approved those simultaneously on the same evening, or?
Perhaps.
Yeah, okay.
But this is going to work well, too.
Yeah, I was going to say, I'm not opposed, but I was just kind of pointing at our.
So sometimes it takes a little bit for policy to keep track when we've made an adjustment. But yes. Anything else? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The motion is carried. And how about now, a motion to approve the first reading of revised School Board Policy 111 relating, related to our district educational goals?
I'll move to approve.
Thank you, Lindsey. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ellen. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The motion is carried. So Ellen, I am going to turn to you because these are, these next motions fall under the Educational Program. So do you want to speak to them or make some motions?
We, we talked about these, I think, the last time, that was first reading. This is the second reading. We had these in committee. These are just revisions and updates to policies. We had extensive conversation with building administrators about this. So this is just the second reading of it.
And I think we can take one motion for all three of these, because they're all related to the same policy.
I will move that we approve the second reading of policy, School Board Policy 345.62, 345.61, and 345.43.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Todd. Questions, comments? This is the second reading, so we went through them more extensively with the first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The motion is carried. We now, we have already approved the first reading of policy 443.1 related to this student dress code. We also have had considerable conversation about this. And tonight, the second reading is before the school board. So at this point, do we have a motion to approve the second reading of the revised School Board Policy 443.1 Student Dress Code?
I'll approve.
Thank you, Todd. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Bob. Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The motion is carried. All right. We also have another second reading coming to us, and this is related to the locker room policy. So do we have a motion to approve the second reading of revised School Board Policy 731.1 Locker Room Privacy? Thank you, Lindsey. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Bob. And once again, this is the second reading. We had considerable conversation about this when we talked about the first reading, as well as when we discussed this portion in the handbooks. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The motion is carried. At this point, do we have any proposed or suggested items for the next regular board meeting or future board meeting agendas? All right, we will schedule upcoming meetings. The new teacher meet and greet will be Wednesday, August 17, 4:00 to 5:30 at Juniors. The electors meeting will be Tuesday, August 30, at 6 o'clock in the River Falls High School Media Center. Educational Program Committee will meet, will not meet in September, but the Finance and Facilities, right?
I was expecting cheers or something.
Well, everybody wants to make sure that it comes to fruition, that you don't add on. So that's, that's the reason, right?
Protest, that they want it.
Right. The Finance and Facilities Committee meeting will be Monday, September 12, at 6 o'clock here in the district office. There will be no Personnel Committee meeting in September. And an annual meeting is scheduled for Monday, September 19, at 6 o'clock in the River Falls High School Auditorium. The next regular board meeting will be Monday, September 19, at 7 o'clock in the high school. So that would be, just to make sure everybody's recognizing that, it will be right after. It will be following the annual meeting. At this point, I am requesting a motion to move into executive session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute 1985-1E for discussion of confidential legal matters related to district lease agreement and liability. Is there a motion, please?
So moved.
Thank you, Bob. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mike. And I need a roll call, and I'll start with you, Ellen.
Yes.
I'm saying yes, Todd?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Lindsey?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Thank you. We are in executive session. Thank you to everybody who joined us this evening. We'll see you again.